That eliminated several of the questions of variances. And the other significant modification is that the lot 7.01, which is where the Goddard School is located, it has been decided that that lot will be folded into the existing condominium that will erase the lot line between lot 7.01 and the remaining property. So that effectively this parcel is a single parcel for purposes of condominium, the management and operation of the Eastons and the overall operation of the entire property. Because these are significant changes, Mr. Collins, we did renotice and have submitted our renotice package to this board just to make sure that everyone was made aware of the proposed modifications. Madam Chairwoman, if you also recall, at the end of the meeting, we essentially took two hearings tonight and a hearing that will be on August the 13th. The reason is that our site manager junior, Mr. Michelle, was not available. However, it's my intention to get through as much of the testimony as remaining witnesses as we possibly can. Those witnesses for tonight, Susan Hoyt, who is the operational manager for the Goddard School, will testify just to clarify some points and questions the board had relative to the operation of the Goddard School. We then have the architects for both the Goddard School, who's Ben Gordon, and the Choice Hotels, which is in the Hollis Ave area. They'll testify to this board about the building architecture and design. And finally, Gary Dean from Dolan &amp; Dean Associates will testify on site traffic. The hope is that we conclude all these witnesses at tonight's meeting and then we can conclude at the next meeting on August 13th with Mr. Michelle and Mr. Toby, the planner for this project. So with that, Madam Chairwoman, I would like to call Mrs. Hoyt.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hoyt, you'll need to be sworn in. Mr. Collins will swear you in. Please raise your right hand. You swear if I'm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing left to choose out of.
I do.
Please state your name and give us an address.
Susan Hoyt. The address of my current business is 378 South French Road in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
How does that vary your last name?
H-O-Y.
And Mrs. Hoyt, can you give the board a little bit of your background in terms of operations and experience?
Sure. I've operated this Goddard School in Hillsborough for 20 years. We opened in March of 1999. I have lived in Somerset County since I was six years old, so I know the area quite well. And I went to school at Rutgers Douglas College to get my undergrad in English Education and my MBA from therapy Dickinson.
And you're going to be operating this Goddard School at this location?
Yes, along with my son.
Okay. Now, one of the questions related to how you operate in the morning, in the afternoon, with child drop-offs and pickups, can you describe that to the board?
Sure. Our current school in Hillsborough can accommodate 148 children, so it's just about the same size. And unlike the public school where there is a set time of day that children need to be at the school, set time of day when they leave the school, that is not the case in our type of setting. The primary drop-off time though is between 7:00 and 8:30 in the morning, and then the primary pickup time will be between 5:00 and 6:30 p.m. We will have some children who would be picked up midday at about 12:30 after lunch.
So how is your security guard when a parent comes to drop off or to pick up for a child?
The first door is open, and then there is another interior door that is always locked. And the parent is required by the state to sign their child's in or out, which we do now with the assistance of an iPad in the Hoeyra area. The security for the door can vary. We haven't finalized our plan for that yet, but in Hillsborough, the doors are always locked and we require a human being to unlock the door for people to come in and out. But there are also systems that are biometric entry where somebody's fingerprints or even their retinas, so we are exploring some of those options too.
And how long does that process take?
Minutes.
Good. And in your experience, does everybody come at one time?
Not at all. Not at all. I would say typically, I mean, my office sits right outside where people sign in the iPad. Once in a while, I will see two people waiting. Typically, it's a constant stream of people coming in and out.
And is the facility in Hillsborough comparatively sized with this facility?
Yes, they're just about the same.
Okay, all right. Then in terms of security, there were some questions raised about the fencing around the play area and the Goddard School itself. Explain why you need the fencing in that security.
The fencing would be six feet high. It would be aluminum fence, so you can see through it, which is important. We don't want it to completely be so that people could not see from the outside. Every gate is alarmed, it's locked and alarmed.
And there was also a question about the amount of space between the building and the exit doors and that fence. Why do you need to have that sidewalk around your perimeter?
Every door on the perimeter of the building has to have immediate access for emergency egress. So even when we do our fire drill practices, the children have to go out those doors all the time. They're also the way that they exit the building to get to the playground. And in the case of the babies and toddlers, if we do a fire drill or had to evacuate the building, babies are actually put in cribs, four babies in one crib and wheeled out. And the other option would be to put children in a buggy, and the buggies hold four kids, so they're about three feet wide.
And in terms then of the play area itself, the board had some questions about how that play area actually functions. How do you get the children onto and off the play area, supervision, et cetera?
We have a schedule, and the way that it works is only one classroom is on the playground at any time for each age group. So there's a playground that's for preschoolers and older, so the three and older children have one playground. And then there's another playground for the children who are three and under. They are separated by gate. And so the maximum number of children that would be on each playground for preschoolers and up would be 20, and for the younger group, 12 children at the most.
And the teachers are out there?
Yes, they're in the same ratios as they are in the classroom. So if there are two teachers in the classroom, there would be two teachers on the playground. If there are three in the classroom, there'll be three on the playground.
And do you have like a canopy or shade protection?
Yes. Goddard requires us, and we have in Hillsborough too, to have a shade structure over the play surfaces.
Now, there was another question the board raised relative to the interplay, if you will, between the after-school kindergarten program from the public school and the Goddard School. Do you have?
Yes, I have not been able to get clarification from Bridgewater as to their policy. I think part of the issue is that the Bridgewater Board of Education runs their own after-school program, so obviously they generate revenue from that program. So I don't know how willing they will be to bus children from their school to us, but there is only one school that would be within this sending territory, and that's Adamsville School. So the most there would be would be one bus at approximately 3:30. I'm not, to be honest, real optimistic that that's even.
If I may, I think they only run two programs, Prim and Hillside, I think the others are private.
Oh, that's not what I was told, okay.
No, they're moving towards that.
But even if they allow us, it would only be one bus.
And just let me know.
Yeah.
Okay, and so in terms of the pickup in the evening, is that the same characteristics as your morning drop-off?
Yes, pretty much. In our building in Hillsborough, we have 17 parking spaces in front of the school and then two handicapped. It is rarely if ever full. And again, it's kind of a revolving door. We call it the bewitching hour from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock when people are picking up their children. It's a continuum, but everybody's anxious to get home, so they don't spend too much time. They get their kid, they get their report, and they pluck out.
So in terms of how you're operating, then the teachers, do you have shifts of teachers?
Yeah, typically, everybody works eight hours and has an hour for lunch. So full-time staff have a nine-hour day. So anybody that's there at 6:30 would leave at, at 7:02 would leave at 4:00, and anybody who's leaving at 6:30 in the evening would arrive at 9:30. So they are also staggered. We do have part-time people as well, some awesome college kids that we couldn't survive without who'd help at the end of the day.
Good. And are you able to control parking for your employees?
Definitely. Yeah, they don't park, they're not allowed to park in front of the building, so there are other spaces for them. And this building, that would be in the back of the building, and they know they never park where the families are dropping their kids off.
And what about deliveries? What's your experience with deliveries? What kind of products?
The only delivery we have on a regular basis is once a week, we get a delivery of paper products, paper plates and toilet paper and that kind of thing. Other than that, we just have the random FedEx truck or UPS truck dropping off supplies, staples. The only regular delivery that we have is once a week for paper products.
And that's just a step van too?
Yes, a little bit bigger. It's not a tractor trailer.
Okay, all right. And I'm assuming you operate some major events like graduation and the Halloween, the Christmas pageant, that kind of stuff?
The biggest event is our Halloween parade, and that is usually the Friday before Halloween, and it runs for about an hour. And the other things that we have at the school is Mother's Day, we have a tea, and Father's Day, we have a little get-together that the dads come. Again, we typically do them from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock before what would be typical pickup. In our experience in Hillsborough, we just have too many kids to have big people at the school, so we rent space at the Hillsborough High School when we have something like graduation or Halloween concert.
And you know well in advance when these events occur?
Yes, the calendar is set for the whole year.
I have no further questions for Ms. Hoyt. I trust that her testimony will answer some of the board's questions.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Sure.
You know Bridgewater has half-day kindergarten?
Yes.
Right? Do you have plans to bus children from morning programs and vice versa?
We will never, ever, ever have a bus. That is not my thing. I don't want to own a bus, I don't want to deal with that whole thing. If the district is willing to bus children to us, again, it would only be from Adamsville School. That's, you know, their policy is they will not go, like they would bring kids to us who are at Van Holton School, they're too far, or Milltown School, they would go to places that are close to them. So it's something we would certainly entertain. We have that now in Hillsborough, and the biggest group we've ever had for that program is 15 children, and they come from one, two, three, four elementary schools. Thank you.
I have one question. The drop-off is pretty straightforward. If somebody comes and a teacher meets kids at the door.
Yeah.
How about the pickup, since it varies over several hours? A parent shows up, how do you sort out which kid goes with which?
Well, I have to say, we pride ourselves in knowing every child and every parent, and we've never had a mix-up in 20 years, but the parents, you know, they go right to their child's classroom if the child is in the classroom. Sometimes they're on the playground when they come to pick up. They get their child, they get their belongings, usually, and many times they might have a second child to pick up, and they say goodnight, and they're on their way. It really, 10 minutes is probably the average time that it takes them.
Thank you, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Describe, where is the location of the school you now run in Hillsborough relative to other?
It's diagonal from the municipal building.
And so what surrounds it?
What surrounds it? Lenny's Pizza. It's in a three-building strip mall, if you will. We have one whole building that's 8,700 square feet, and there are two buildings that, one is professional space, doctor's offices, children's rehab, that kind of thing, and the other is mostly retail. And in one of those buildings, we have another 2,000 square feet where we have our gym.
So to help me, if you walk out in the back, is the layout similar, is the playground?
No, it's not similar because that was, where we are now is a retrofit building. So, and again, 20 years ago, the way they designed buildings was a little bit different, for God of anyway, but this building is left-to-right classrooms, and the playground is in the back and on the side.
And if you go back, past, through the playground, there was a back gate into the playground, what's the number?
How many? I would say 35 residential homes. And back in the day in 1998, those people actually petitioned the planning board in Hillsborough to put something like a childcare center there because they liked the idea of nothing going on at night and weekends. So in 20 years, I've had one call from my neighbor asking us to be quiet on the playground.
I understand, thank you. Another question, so I was trying to just do some of the numbers and think about the, you mentioned there's about 140, 140?
We have about 148 in our main building, yeah.
So how many are picked up in the evening between the hours of 4:00, 6:00?
How many? If I had to guess, I would say about 60.
So, again, just trying to work it through.
So staggered.
So 60 people are being picked up, and it's taking, I mean, the process you mentioned is people come into the building and they gather belongings, so it is not a one-two-minute event?
No, no.
So how do they deal with parking? I mean, is there sufficient parking here that they actually, because you have 60?
Yeah.
And so?
Yeah, we really.
It's unclear to me, you know, it's raining, where do people park and what's going on, how's that working?
For the most part, those 17 spaces do just fine. Opposite them are the spaces where the teachers park. So, you know, 4:00, the teachers have left already, so there is some overflow space there. We even have, in the other building, there's a tutoring center, and sometimes those people sneak into one of our spots, and really, it's a non-issue.
All right. And let's come back, I come back to the idea of this particular lot. So if we look at the back, and you mentioned that there's, so the two playgrounds are, are you familiar with?
Yes.
So this is because I'm looking at, I'm looking at the main drawing, but I don't think the drawing matters, drawing number, the site dimension plan 313, and so it shows the two playgrounds in the rear. And you mentioned there's a fence around those?
Yes.
And the fence is see-through?
Yes.
Well, how do you feel about, if you go now, if you go straight back from there, there is parking there, you can, you know, substantially someone can park the entire day there and just be watching children in the playground. Also, off to the right, you have parking, and assuming that they would have a similar view to the playground, how do you feel about that?
Well, right now, we don't have that situation, so I've not really experienced that firsthand, but I do know that there are situations in Goddard Schools where they have, part of the fence is not see-through. So, I mean, I guess it's possible that we could say the back would have to be a different style of fence.
Maybe back and side, maybe if you said the idea of allowing people to park and just watch the entire day.
Right, right, right. I can tell you what we do now. If there's somebody who is parking in the parking lot and we don't know them, or we don't, we're wondering why they're there, I usually go out first of all and see what it looks like and who they are. I call the police if I really felt anything was mysterious, and our teachers are absolutely on the ball with that kind of thing, but, I mean, I don't think it would be a problem to suggest that maybe those back portions of the fence be solid fence.
I mean, because here, I think you're describing, to me, you're describing a different situation where you have hotel visitors, you have, you are 360 around businesses where it seems like you are not. And so there's a lot of reasons for people.
We do also have security cameras, so the monitors are in the offices, and we have cameras on all the playground and parking space, and that would be the case in Bridgewater as well.
And what in your mind makes this a good spot for the school?
Well, I think that, just to be snobby, I don't think there's anything as good as our program available right now to the families in this immediate area of Bridgewater. From a travel standpoint, so many people go that way to work at 22 East, and it's pretty easy to make the U-turn on Findern Avenue and get to 22 West and vice versa.
I was just trying to do that in my mind. So you're saying that the location on the highway for drop-offs is a possibility?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, it's not like it's on the highway, it certainly has reasonable setback from the highway.
And lastly, I just turned, so also for a drop-off, which is faster than anything where you potentially drop off.
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand, and I don't know who's going to talk deep to that, the notion of people just idling their car while they're running?
Yeah, I mean, we have that in our contract where people sign up their contract that they're not supposed to, and again, that's something that we police. If we go outside and somebody's car is running, you know, we help them down, and I'm not going to say I've never gone into the car myself and shut you off, but that is something that we remind people about constantly, whether it's cold weather or hot weather, you cannot leave your car running.
Thank you. No questions, no further questions, thank you.
Any thought to identify some of the parking spots as for Goddard School only?
Well, that's what we have now, 17 spots that are in front of our building, there is a sign that says it's for our use only. Yes, and even in that whole complex, individual business have slots identified just for them.
And you've been doing the same thing there?
I don't see a doubt, yeah.
I ask a question.
Sure.
You mentioned about the program being particularly right for Bridgewater. How do you differentiate your school from others? There's a few others that opened up in the last two or three years, one down 22, one on Washington Valley Road, one on 206, 206 I think. But there's a few that opened up, almost as many as hotels, but how do you differentiate?
Well, you know, our standard analogy is there is a shoe to fit every foot, and there are people who just are looking for daycare, they just want a safe place for their children to be when they're at work. There are people who would like to see their children learn while they're at some place while they're working. The Goddard School's reputation is for a good learning environment. Our Hillsborough program is an accredited program, all of our teachers are teachers, they have background in early education, they're not just, they have to love kids, of course, but they are not people who simply love children. These are people that have to know what's developmentally appropriate for children in their care.
Are they certified?
Are the teachers certified? No, in New Jersey, you don't have certification anymore. You know, back in the day, when I graduated, they just gave you a certification. So they're not necessarily certified because you can get a certificate of eligibility and never be certified, so they don't have to be certified.
And how do you price your school relative to other schools?
Do we price it? Well, it's kind of what the market will bear, but I think that, you know, we're comparable to, let's say, Primrose, there's a Primrose in Warren. The learning experience that you mentioned in Bound Brook is cheaper, they're not as educational, you know, motivated as we are, so we have to, teachers.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, you may have said this already, but what is the youngest age child that you accept?
The state says children as young as six weeks can come to our type of setting.
Okay.
We rarely have a child that young. The average baby starts at the three- to four-month timeframe, and moms have to go back after maternity leave.
Scarlett?
Thank you. You indicated that the typical arrival is 7:00, 8:30, and departure is from 5:00 to 6:30. When are the mandatory limits for pickup?
6:30, we close at 6:30.
6:30 you close, and you open at 7:00. What, obviously it's not a religious facility, so what holidays do you?
We close the week between Christmas and New Year's, but other than that, just major holidays, like we don't close for Martin Luther King Day, or Election Day, or Round Dog Day, or anything like that. And we don't necessarily close for snow days either. Most of our parents have to go to work.
Thank you.
One question, what do you do at 6:30? You have two kids left and no parent show up.
Well, fortunately, that doesn't happen too often, but if somebody has not called us to say they're running late, after 10 minutes, we'll call them and just say, you know, what's your ETA? They took a charge for being late, so that discourages a lot of that. We have our usual suspects, so we stay on top of them.
I have one question.
Yes, please.
It's hard for me to tell from this drawing, but is there a safety barrier between the playground fence and the closest car?
The, vehicle protection is a big issue right now, and I know that our engineer has worked very hard to make sure that we have excellent vehicle protection all around the building, wherever a car could possibly, you know, go. And they, ballards are the main thing, but it doesn't have to be ballards, it could be handled with certain kinds of landscaping or concrete benches, that kind of thing.
So what has been considered here specifically?
Predominantly ballards, that is not my area of expertise.
Mr. Gordon, who is the architect, that's actually my next question.
That's great. Thank you.
Does any other member of the board have a question for this witness? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Does any member of the public have a question for this witness regarding her testimony? Please step forward and state your name and address. Is there another microphone that you can use? Okay.
Use the server something. Yes, my name is Bill Verland, I reside on the Findern Heights section of Bridgewater, which would be right behind the school and the proposed restaurant. And out of all this, what do the Findern Heights residents get out of this?
Well, I guess if they have children of age, they would have a great place for their kids to go on their work.
Not too likely.
It's not too likely.
That they would, or that they could afford to do that. Probably. The other thing is, you had mentioned that the school pickup is mostly between 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m., is that correct?
Mostly.
That's about when Route 22 gets inundated with traffic, and so you'll be, you know, heading to that traffic as you go down. And the problem is, what the township has done unfortunately, they approved all this building, and the infrastructure has not kept up with.
That's probably not a question.
That's not your problem, no, I.
I think that's a question for the engineer, for the traffic safety people.
That's forms of a state issue. Well, okay, I guess that would cover the school part of it anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we would provide jobs for some of the people too, that's also a good thing.
Aren't we?
Provide some jobs to the people too.
Well, I guess that's a possibility. Okay, we'll see.
Is there any other member of the public that has a question for this witness regarding her testimony?
Thanks.
Seeing none?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My next witness has been Horton, the project architect of Goddard School.
I understand you're still on your oath, but.
Yes, I do.
And just for the record, your name and company and address?
My name is Ben Horton with Ben Horton Architecture and Design. Located at 312 State Route 10, Randolph, New Jersey.
And you're licensed professional architect state of New Jersey?
Yes, in numerous other states.
And can you just describe to the board your professional qualifications and prior testimony before boards?
Sure. I testified before this board before any numerous boards throughout the state, received by the last board.
If you want to do this, you may, but you can short-circuit it because the board doesn't recognize and accept Ben Horton as a candidate.
Thank you very much. So you are also the architect of record on the plans for the Goddard School?
That's correct.
Anything good, then, please describe the architectural plan for the Goddard School?
If I may, I'll first go through the set of architectural plans I would like to report. These drawings were dated 1212 and 18.
Do you want those separately marked?
Only things that are different than what was submitted.
And this is part of the submission package?
That's correct. That's great. The first sheet you're looking at is the cover page. The first page on 152 is the floor plan 2.01. The building itself is a one-square structure, approximately 10,000 square foot. As you can see, on the floor plan, bottom of the plan is the side that we're calling the front of the building, which faces the main highway. That's the main entry of the building. And Mrs. Hoyt was talking about the entry, best field there where the security sort of check-in and checkout location. And as you enter to the And as you enter to the vestibule, you'll see there is an interior corridor that goes around the center sort of classroom. And then most of the classroom where the children are going to reside is located off the center corridor that runs through the middle of the building. All the classrooms are located to the perimeter with windows. And, you know, the code requirement for these classrooms for this type of use, you have to have two exits for each of the classrooms. And the way they, God likes to have a plan, is to have one door, obviously, from the interior corridor, and one door going to the outside. And there is other small amenities, obviously, like bathrooms. And there's a small prep kitchen pantry area for snacks, and some office space. And that's really good. It's a very simple, it's a series of classrooms around the corridor. And by the layout, the rooms all have windows, which you want for the classroom, the kids are going to be. Then they have the doors, which you saw in the site plan during the last hearing. I think there were some questions about those doors, why they're there. It's primarily to get the kids in and out of the classrooms, and it's required by code for emergency purposes. Every classroom has to have two exits. And the way this plan is set up is one door goes into the corridor inside, which works, and then you have one door going to the outside. And, you know, I would imagine those doors will be utilized also for the rear playground. For all the classrooms, they could go, especially the ones on the side, where there's a sidewalk running along the left and the right side of the building, the sidewalk connection to the rear playground. There is also two, a couple classrooms to the right and the center of what I call the front bumpout. Those have the doors facing the front, and again, there's a sidewalk that extends around the front and the sides. I should have mentioned that first. And I think when, if you recall the site plan, there's a security gate that starts at the corner of the front bumpout. And it continues around the building towards the front and along the side, all the way up to the rear playground area. You know, graphically, what that's doing is it's creating a secure zone. So anytime a kid steps out of that classroom door, they're going to be contained in that secured area where outsiders can't get in and the kids can't run out. So they'll be contained in that secure sort of, it's like an exterior corridor, basically, that gradually dimension to the rear playground area. That's how it's set up on both sides of the building. And I think one of the questions about the protective ballers, if you refer to the site plan, anywhere there's a sidewalk and the disfenced area is close to the parking spaces along the sidewalk, there are ballers. There's ballers on the side that essentially runs all the way around the perimeter, front and the left and right side of the building. When it gets to the rear playground area, there's quite a bit of landscaping between the playground fencing and the parking lot, so there's some ballers around there. But on all three sides, you'll see on the side, there's ballers wrapped around the corners.
And just confirm that design is for maximum occupancy, 156?
That's correct. I'm not sure exactly how many people go in and out with, but it could accommodate around that number of people. There's a limit. How many kids can have in a classroom? That's guided by the state's minimum standards, so they can't build it more than the minimum standards. The next plan is the exterior elevation drawings, A 4.01. This kind of gives you the idea that it's a one-story structure. There is a roofed element, the first floor, the ground floor. Everything's entry level and grade, what we call a slab level grade, there's no basement. Everything's built right on the ground. And then the roof structure, it's just, it's like a large ranch-style house, really, you know, for lack of a better word. And they did put, God likes to do some decorative things to make the roof look nice. They added dormers. This is a standard prototype feature. Most of the design, God spent a lot of time developing these standards over the years. And honestly, as an architect, it's not something that I've invented. It's a prototype that's tried and true. And with this plan, most of it is prototype. There's very minimal applications to the prototype. So you can see, they have this roofed element, a couple dormers on the front to make it look a little nicer. There is an entry drop-off area where there's an entry canopy, which is also a nice feature. So, you know, you can get out of the rain before you go to the front door. And there are a lot of front elevations, like a fence structure at the top. The roof slopes up, but it flattens out like a mansard roof. And the reason for that is, a lot of times, water, they like to be kind of cognizant of, like, you know, sort of mechanical equipment. A lot of times, you're going to have air conditioning, and you're going to have compressors. You put it on the ground, or you can put it on the roof. Here, they have all this roof space. They flatten out the top portion. You can see kind of the side profile, the side elevation here, how it kind of flattens out towards the top. And that's where they put the condensers on the roof. So instead of putting it on the ground, you know, they put it on top, and they put this nice fence structure to kind of screen it. The next sheet is A 4.02, which is, looks almost identical. It's the rear view, which would face the playground. Again, they take the brick all the way around that structure. They put windows everywhere. They also put the dormers on the rear side, trying to make parts of the building look attractive. Again, you have the same concept in the back as the front, except it doesn't have a canopy in the back. The other drawing that we sort of provided, if I could go to the last sheet, is just the sign detail, showing you the top details of the side sign detail, and the bottom details of the standing sign detail. They're all within the ordinance requirements. It's the Goddard standard. I think the side sign, best place to look at it is in the rendering, which I'll show you in a second here. But the monument sign, it's not a very large sign. It's approximately eight foot wide, three foot, four inches high. And it's mounted on coast. I think you've seen a lot of signs like that. It's, actually, just trying to read my notes here. It's a sign panel, so it's going to be lit from the outside, where you'll have, like, you know, like a little uplight on the ground. And you put side sign itself. It's lettering signs, and, excuse me, my glasses might use the piece looking at me. I believe those are externally illuminated too. It's not indicated as internally illuminated, so they'll be externally illuminated. And if I could take you to the rendering that we presented.
This has not been submitted to the board?
This was submitted to the board.
This was submitted?
Yes, okay, so it is more than updated. It was part of the application. This is called Artistic Rendering D1, Leventasad. This is the render front elevation drawing that you saw. We put that architectural drawing and just colorized it, put the material to represent what the building would look like. As you can tell, it's simply, you have the nice kind of traditional brick, the up-lung roof, the asphalt shank, the side roof that you see in the house. It's a very common finish. I think one of the questions we got from your professionals is that, it was a question about, what are these materials over the window? It was noted, on the prototype, God uses, they call it bow stone. But what it basically is, it's their term for cast stone. It's concrete that you cast to make it look like stone, and you use it as a lensel. It's a really common product. So you'll have this cast stone detail, the brick, and all the white trim mark to make the roof edges look a little nicer. Those will be, most likely, the maintenance type of trim board. That will be a white finish. And all the fencing material on top will be vinyl type of white material.
And you carry that element all the way around the building?
That's correct. And there was one issue, the professional planners picked up. It was a very nuanced detail, but they did find, the fence actually noted at 42 inches high. And there's an ordinance that you have that says, any roof structure like carpet can't be higher than 3D. We're asking it to be 42 inches, because actually, there's a building code section that says if you have mechanical equipment that's close to the edge of the roof, it has to be 42 inches high. That's the height requirement for garbage. The idea is that if somebody's working there, 42 inch high, but kind of helping from falling over. So we thought that it would be best to make it 42 inches high, because we are going to have some little rooftop equipment, like oil compressors that you see in your house. Could be similar-sized equipment sitting up there. And there will be markers there, so by code, we're going to have to provide some sort of protective structure. That code says it has to be 42 inches. The concern, the zoning ordinance, I think the intent was, if you have firefighters getting up there with ladders and such, would they be able to climb over that obstruction to get to the rest of the roof? It's 42 inches high. I think a firefighter would be, it's about this height, the mark you see here. It would be the same height you see about 42 inches. I think, I don't see an issue with the firefighters, but if the, our official said, "Look, I want that lower to 36 inches", we could certainly do that, but then now we're going to have to ask the building code official to say, "We need your blessing to give us a grace with the building code." It's a catch point to them.
Building official or group guy?
Yeah.
Building office would be closer than that, the edge of the building, so you'd have to provide a 42-inch door and be able to.
But it was a good pick-up by a professional, saying that this is something that we have in the ordinance. So from my perspective, I think 42 inches would be preferable, and I don't think the firefighters are going to have that issue.
Why don't we, a lot of the markers isn't exhibited, because the big size is useful for our records. Though I don't know the number.
While you're looking at that, the other.
A6.
A6.
A6? Mr. Horton, if you would mark it as A6, with today's date, that should work. 7/22.
And at the back of the board, I've got some photographs.
Oh, that'll be A7.
Well, these photographs are similar to Goddard Schools' artwork built in other parts of the country, just to give you an idea of what's been built. And it kind of shows you, it looks just like the ramp.
And the sign, is it the top photo of Toronto, Wisconsin? That's the same sign we're proposing here, right?
That's correct. Except it would meet our sign ordinance requirements.
Right, right. Size meets size. And then just one other question in this design, are there any loudspeakers or other types of audio equipment outside of the building?
That, I wouldn't, no, no.
I have no further questions for Mr. Horton.
Can you go back to the floor plan drawing, please? Where are the doors that exit from the classrooms?
I'm going to mark it, so you can see better. This classroom in the right corner has the exit door here, in the right, towards the front door in front of the building. And this classroom has door here. As you go towards the left, this classroom has the door to the left of the front entry door. This classroom in the corner, front corner, has a door to the left side. There's a door from the corridor that's required. And there's a door, this classroom towards the rear left corner has a door to the left side. Going back to the right side, this classroom, actually, this one room in the lower right corner is actually a mechanical room. It's a small mechanical room that accesses from the outside. This classroom has a door to the right side. That's the classroom to the lower right side. The hallway has a door to the outside on the right. The rear right corner classroom has a door to the right. And then you have three classrooms towards the rear, with all doors facing the rear playground. And then there's one facility room that you can access to rear playground in the middle.
And then going, it's surrounded by a fence, correct?
That's correct. So if you start from the front bumpout, on the site plan, it shows there's a gate that starts kind of near the corner of that bumpout. And it wraps around, maintaining a sidewalk all the way around the perimeter, until you get to the rear corner, then it continues up the page and opens up into the rear playground.
Where are the exits on the fence?
The two exits are located right next to the front entry doors, on either side.
If you're on the left, the last door on the left side, you come out of the classroom, and you end up on the sidewalk, which fence exit are you going to use if you have to get out in an emergency?
Well, in an emergency, what you try to do with this type of facility is you don't want the kids to just run out. You want to, if there's a fire emergency, they're going to exit into the rear playground, because it's outside in a secured area. Now, if there was ever an issue that they wanted to exit them out of the fenced area and not go back into the building, then the only gate entry would be located in the, by the front entry door, either to the left of the bumpout or to the right of the bumpout.
So there's only one exit and entry from the gate?
There's two. So there's one on the left side and one on the right side.
Okay. And in an emergency, do the kids have to be a certain amount of feet distance from the building?
Well, the, this, the safety protocol is, from a fire safety perspective, like, this is an interesting sort of thing, because I deal with a lot of what's considered I use group. That's the, it's called institutional uses, so like hospitals, nursing homes, and daycare facilities. Consider I use group. Why? Because occupants can't escape on their own. They need to be escorted or supervised, right? And because of those requirements, there's a lot of stringent code requirements to make the building safe. So in the case of buildings where you have dementia-type of patients in a nursing home, you can't let them just wander around on their own in case of emergency. So what we do is, we protect them inside the building, so we move from one part of the building to the other. Now, this is a very small building, but it's the same concept. You try to secure the building and make the building safe enough so that it has the required sprinkler system. Whereas a retail building this size, you wouldn't need sprinklers. But because of the fact that it's a daycare facility, you have to have sprinklers. And then you have to have other requirements, like special smoke inhalants, things that are above and beyond. Some of the statistical sort of information when you look at this type of uses, since in the US we started adopting sprinklers, this was an interesting fact that I learned from a fire safety expert that we brought on for another project that we presented to another board. The, that fire safety specialist said that 96% of the fires that started in a building was put out by two sprinkler heads or more, or less. 100% of the fires that started in a building that sprinkled was put out with five sprinkler heads or less. So 100% of the buildings of this type that had fires occur was put out by five sprinkler heads or less. 96% were put out by two sprinkler heads or less. So it's not like in a movie where, you know, there's a fire somewhere, a whole building, and sprinklers that comes on. Only sections where the fire occurs, the sprinklers come on, and it puts out the fire before it becomes a problem in the rest of the building. Because of these stringent requirements, it's a safe building. Generally, if you do have a fire, you heard the others this way, say, if you do have a fire, you're going to be. Generally, if you do have a fire, you heard Mr. Soy say, if you do have a fire, you're going to evacuate. And that's for safety reasons, but honestly, it's just never happened where we had to evacuate in that building. And I think in most cases.
I thought there was a requirement that if you were evacuating a school, they needed to go to a safe place, a certain distance from the school. So I was just curious how that would be done and correct me if I'm wrong too.
There's, I can't tell you like what the safety rules are, like usually when you have an open parking lot, like in a school, they'll designate certain sections of the parking lot. They'll have groups that are trained, the teachers are trained, their kids coming out of this door, going to this section of the parking lot. These other kids go to this section of the parking lot, just to try to maintain some decorum. But for daycare facility like this, if they did have a fire, whereas case scenario, they had to evacuate, they'd come on into the parking lot, they're going to go into the rear yard because they're in a safe area, they're in an open space. We're playing around this playing, playing large enough that the, the kids could be, even if there was a blazing fire, which won't happen, just won't happen.
I guess that was my concern, if there was an emergency and all the children had to evacuate, would they be funneling out into the parking lot behind the building where the cars are coming in to go to the lands?
The, the whole point of the, the security fence around the whole building, and this is a better model than most daycare facility, is that they secure the kids at every door that they could come out of and, and then have them routed into the back playground area for security purposes. Not every school has that. This is one of those daycare that I think goes a step above. I kind of like that about the security that they have.
Thank you.
Each classroom has a door, so when the kids go out for release time, they go out that door as well as whatever number of teachers. Are those self-locking doors?
We didn't get to that level. I think, yeah, it's soy said they are some.
Okay. How does, does the teacher then have a key to get back in?
Yep. She has a little band.
Anna?
Yes, Mr. Lerner.
I have two questions. The first on the bollards, I understand you have on the east and west. Is there a reason since cars are usually stronger than bushes that you wouldn't have around the back?
In the back area, I believe there's longer distances with landscaping between the, the parking lot curb and the fencing. Whereas on, on the left, the right side, in front of the building, you have is a little bit of sidewalk where you get to the building.
I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is, I understand, I see the parking spaces on the right and left, but my question, I guess, is if the idea is that it's supposed to stop a car, is there any reason not to protect the playground?
I, I think there's a, I'm not an expert in terms of stopping vehicles. I think last meeting, the, the site engineer had testified that these bollards are meant to stop cars going at a certain speed, something concerning going at a full twenty, thirty mile an hour speed.
Again, still a deterrent. I, I, yeah, and I don't know if you consider it, but it's a deterrent and someone drawing a bar doesn't know that this big cement circle, I think it's not myself. And kind of similarly on the security, I'm not an architect, but I know schools are retrofitting buildings and I think that the key word is target partnering and trying to create a, a main entrance where people are buzzed in and seen and not have thirty doors. This seems to be the opposite. Where there's egress and entrance from multiple places, and I suspect the doors you're putting up aren't you know, security doors that from the outside. I'm just curious how you reconcile.
Right, right now, if I may. All those perimeter doors around the building, if I could draw a red line or overlay it. There's a security fence around that perimeter door that kind of leads you all the way into the rear playground area. And this is not the scale on the rear, we're just demonstrating diagrammatically where that security fence is located. And it comes all the way around so that when you look at this red line around the building, all the doors coming out of the classroom are located inside of that security fence zone so that an outsider can't get into that zone. So that the kids are always separated from the outside of this security fence. And it's, it's to keep the kids contained, but it's also keep the outsiders out.
I think, is it alarmed at all? The, the outside area alarmed?
The gates are alarmed.
The gates are alarmed. And I think before you heard Mr. Soy's testimony, he said they do put security cameras all around the exterior, parking lots and the playground.
Again, as I said, they're, they're building schools bulletproof with the one, with the one door in the front and this. Again, I agree with you saying with the fence, but it's, it is different from what they're looking at when they're building schools these days.
Yeah, this, this is, I think, a step above like a lot of the evenings I've seen in the past, when the security fencing are all the way around. Usually you just love the fence in the back area, just around the playground. But in this case, it's a nice point, a nice prototype where all the kids, you know, for safety reasons, they have the doors all the way to the outside. And, you know, the concern is security issues. And all those issues with the bollard, where do we, where we place the bollards versus where we didn't place the bollards, was kind of carefully thought through by the site engineer in terms of, you know, where they need to have that bollard versus areas where they have enough landscaping to slow the car down. Now, at the end of the day, it's like, you asked me after nine eleven, why don't we go to all the buildings so that it's, you know, airplane? The answer is simple truth is that we did that for every building, we want to be building buildings, we're coming forward. We do, the codes have changed. There's much more added to the safety requirements for fire stairs, elevators, you know, all those things, there's like new features added in high rise buildings, like strips on the stairwell in case the fire goes out, so you can still see. There's a lot of things that, that we, we adopt and at the end of the day, things like if there's, you know, God forbid, somebody decides to drive their car, you know, like they did in New York City, driving through Condes Street, you can't stop them. There's certain things we can't do.
One of the requirements, kind of on age of children, is they have to have direct access out of the, out of that classroom. I agree.
Emergency exits wouldn't, wouldn't bother you, it's, it's the fact that the door's going to be used, open and closed, open and closed, open and closed.
But it's not.
That's for the exits of the playground.
Okay, I, I understand, I'm just responding to this.
That's, I think, why it's such a great, you know, reason to have a security fence, because it separates that traffic.
Are those exterior classroom doors alarmed?
The, the doors themselves are alarmed, no. But because during the daytime, but the gates are alarmed, so they're.
Looking on the gates.
Now, the gates.
Nobody cameras. Shouldn't be there, doesn't get in there.
Yeah, I think if somebody makes an effort to climb a six foot fence, if they get over it, they'll be seen. And that's partly the reason why daycare centers like to have that open fence. If you do see somebody hanging around the fence, it's not only, it's also like, parents also kind of a bit of interest in how their kids being visible as opposed to, you know, in an area where they can't really see what's happening, you know? So it's, it's kind of like watching them and then they won't have to use their way to see each other.
Any other member of the board have a question for this witness? Scarlett?
I guess, in your colorized version of A six, I want to ensure that we don't have inconsistency with the construction details. You have a new front, but this looks gray. And is it gray fencing or is it black?
Well, the, the color is going to be black. Yeah. The, the color sometimes, you know, depending on which printer we use and different, the other way the colors go, a little bit different, but the fencing will be black. You know, we're going to, you can see in a lot of the photographs, the brick color that that is, but generally it's going to be that reddish brick and one manufacturer to the other is going to be a little bit.
And you're having white, two levels of white fencing on the house.
You can show that, I think, A seven, I think it shows then, A seven, shows the top.
Yeah.
Right. If you see that, that you can point that at Mr. Ward.
On top of the roof, the stuff that's on top of the roof, that's going to be white. It picks up the kind of the white trim tones up above. But down below, like this school, if you do come close, you can see that there's bollards in the front, but there's no doors along this front of this school. But there is a black fence on the left side of that. That would be very similar to what we.
In my report, I requested the actual materials be brought to the board. The board will decide if, the board will decide if they have enough information with your colorized rendering. The next, a comment that, in case all your exhibits must be removed from the boards for us to fold. If you can't do it, please provide as a flash chart at the next meeting of each exhibit and have them numbered.
All right, these are subtitles so we can tell you. So we'll lock them up and unfold it for you.
That's wonderful, thank you. Mr. Lerner mentioned something about the not having bollards in the back. He said that the landscaping would be a formidable deterrent. I'd like you to take a look at sheet seven of thirteen of the set of plans because I'm, I'm going to sort of challenge that, those, those are little shrubs thirty inches high. I'd like you to say why thirty inch high little shrubs are a formidable deterrent, so maybe you can come up with a next.
If I could, let's just go down the line. One of the things that we now can do in that we're consolidating the condominium to include the Goddard School is that we were constrained by lot lines on landscaping. We're no longer constrained by that, so I think, Mr. Ward, that the comment may end up causing some additional plantings in that rear area.
Or you could put the plants in the bollards.
Why don't we just put bollards? That eliminates the problem.
I think next meeting, we're going to have the site engineer back.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely discuss that with him.
For architectural standards, designing this type of facility, are you guided or controlled by such things as safety or is that decided to you?
When it comes to site planning, it's primarily the site engineer, but we do talk, but then on a project like this, Goddard School actually sets standards that's much higher than most other daycare facilities. Now, these things like bollards and the special type of fencing that comes straight from Goddard School after their years of education says that they have, they have a very heavy hand.
So the Goddard, the Goddard witnesses will testify as to that, not the site engineers one year.
Well, I think in terms of safety, in terms of, does the the curve, the landscaping between that and the fencing would be enough of a sort of obstruction to slow the vehicle down? I think that's more of maybe a question for the site engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the board have a question for this witness? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. Is there any member of the public that has a question for this witness regarding his testimony? Please step forward. All right, now please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Smith, I live at Three Stanford Drive in Bridgewater behind the Ghoulands. So several questions I want to ask about the building site plan that you have gone. You said that you're going to put a fence up on the roof. You don't think four feet would hinder a fire? What about a partner carrying a scot pack, coats and boots, axes and hoses up on the roof? That hinders them because that's a lot of power to pour up there. The other question I have is the traffic coming into the school. Where does it come from? What driveways does it come in?
That's our, Mr. Dean, who discussed side circulation and traffic.
Hey, does anybody there study on that road that they could call?
Yes, Mr. Dean did.
Well, I tell you what, you should sit down here now. You got a detour down there now and the road is miserable. Okay, that is what I had to ask about that building. The other thing is, is anybody do a DEP check on it?
On the?
On the site itself?
Yes, we submitted a assessment of the property that has had two reported instances over the years. Both have been resulted through the DEP process with what was then a no further action letter or under the LSRP, what's called a response action outcome, so the environmental conditions have been addressed.
What I found on that area over there is on the east side wall of Ghoulands, there's five wells there for pollution that they have been in. Now, I worked with fuels for eighteen years. I watched it circle a whole maple mason back. The mesa was clean and so we had fuels that was intense for fifteen years back on us. Is anybody monitoring it right now and see if it's coming back around?
Yes, there's no, there's no restriction relative to the monitoring wells or groundwater conditions, so that has been addressed. We have a report that allies is up.
As I said, I was sitting there, leaving. I, I had the DEP on my neck every time he turned around. He used to come in and do his sample down the dry wells, everything, and then they'd tell you, you got pollution. And they, they'll show you with their cameras how it circles. They can trace it, might fucking die in it. And I'd go to several different sites and find it, it might be on the other side of the basin. You're leaving back to the original spot to where you were in.
Counsel, is that report available for the public?
We have a summary. This was submitted, it's synergy environmental, it's a summary of the environmental conditions. It is part of the application package, I don't know if you need me to mark it separately, but it's this document, synergy environmental, and it is part of our submission package.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do you have any questions for the witness regarding his testimony?
Now, I'm going to sit down and like to take your, your spots.
Is there any other member of the public with a question for this witness regarding his testimony? Please step forward.
Take Miami again and so forth.
Please state your name.
This is Bill Grilling, from the, Fender and I, Six, near Bridgewater, Seven Stanford Drive, actually. Seven Stanford Drive, actually. And what I note here is the Goddard School building will be just about eighty, eleven thousand square feet according to this letter here. And the playground surface will be just over one thousand seven hundred square feet. Could you, could you tell me what the service will be, what type of pavement?
The circus of play, what is that, this described?
I think the site engineer had described that during the last hearings. I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the combination.
Would you, I, I, I would assume that a portion of that, or that it will all be pinched away from the, the school itself. So the water is going to flow away from the building, that's just, is going to sense, so a portion of that will then therefore flow towards, you know, Fender Heights. And what I'd like to point out is along Stanford Drive, every time it rains, just before I came here, I, I was walking prior to the rain, I walk three times a week for exercise, and I noticed that, you know, one of the drains was, was full. And I noticed that, you know, one of the drains was, was full at the end of, uh, Stanford Drive, which as you probably know is a, is a, you know, dead end. And so sure enough, when I, I left to come here about, uh, uh, six thirty or so, uh, that, that whole back area was flooded, right at the end of, uh, you know, Stanford Drive. So there's the, uh, uh, drainage, uh, um, issue there. And if, if, and be, be, between the school and the, uh, playground area, if you, um, you're, you're going to this place about twelve thousand six hundred, uh, square feet of soil. And, uh, that will quite, uh, uh, there's a good chance that that will affect the, uh.
So that's not this witness?
Yeah, the drive.
This is Mr. Michelle's drainage analysis. And I guarantee you, he will go through this analysis to, to, to address issues relative to storm management. That's not the article.
I'm sure he does study it, yeah.
When will, uh, when will he be here to testify?
That's at August thirteenth. He wasn't available, he was out this week, so that's why we're coming back on Thursday.
He'll testify regarding storm warning?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Well, I, anyway, that drain at the, at the end of Stanford should be cleaned, uh, uh, by someone certainly. It's a, it's a, you know, it's a problem when it rains. Uh, the, the other thing is, and, uh, this may be a bit beyond your, uh, uh, realm of, uh, expertise. But it occurred to me that, uh, blending, in, 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 if, if the hotel is built along with, uh, you know, the, you know, uh, holy hands there, as it is, you're gonna have adults that come out of both buildings that are maybe, you know, a little bit tipsy. And you're gonna have kids within a few hundred feet of them. I, I don't know if that's such a good blend, but I just thought I could point it out for what it's worth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public with a question for this witness regarding his testimony? Seeing none?
Thank you, ma'am, Carolyn, next witness is, um, the private architect for Choice Hotels in the Hall of Spirit. And you were previously sworn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you were still on the road and understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you could state the name of the record and place of employment and professional.
My name is Mehale Zavari, that's M.E.H.A.L. Last name is J.H.A.V.E.R.I. I'm principal at NJF Architecture at two fifty West Main Street, Suite Two O Six, Moorestown.
Moorestown?
Uh, New Jersey, zero eight, zero five, seven.
And you're licensed professional architect?
Yes, sir.
And just describe your education, your background, experience in terms of testifying in front of boards.
Um, I graduated from School of Architecture from India in nineteen ninety-seven. And came here, worked for two years, did my masters in urban design from Pratt Institute in Brooklyn. And since then, I've been working. I got licensed in two thousand nine and I opened my own firm. It's been ten years that I'm practicing with my own. Um, I'm licensed in a couple of states, uh, around New Jersey and South Carolina. Uh, I have testified in front of, uh, many of the boards, not this one.
And you've been accepted by those boards as a professional architect? Um, I'm.
Who has set his qualifications as a registered architect?
Thank you very much. Um, and you are the architect who is responsible for the plans relative to the Choice Hotel before the board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you could, then just describe to the board the, the architecture of the proposed hotel.
Let me put the drawings.
All brother.
This drawing was submitted, um, with the application.
Just identify the number of the.
It's Z one A and it's dated as seven nine, two thousand ninety, that's the latest provision. Uh, its floor plans, uh, what first we have is the first floor plan and the second one is typical floor plans. Again, it describes, it shows the building in general as a schematic layout, more or less, uh, not a detailed construction drawing. Uh, what we have on the first floor altogether, I'll just describe the building. Uh, we have about seventy, seventy thousand five hundred sixteen square feet of, uh, four-story structure. That's gonna be a hotel, uh, all, all of it. Seventeen thousand, uh, six hundred forty-two square feet of that is the first floor and everything else above is repeated, uh, structure. Altogether, we have hundred and twenty-one rooms, thirty-nine rooms on each floor above the first floor and four rooms on the first floor. The first floor mainly again, just having four rooms. Most of the spaces are the back of the house, mechanical units, uh, uh, you have the bathrooms, public spaces, uh, kitchen, meeting room, things along that line. So that's what consists of the first floor for the most part. Also, we have some people, um, and we have canopy in the front which faces north, faces, uh, Route twenty-two. Um, and it's a little bit, if you, if you are looking at the holy hands, uh, it's just a little bit wide of the holy hands. You will see the, the entrance can of the building. We have two exits, uh, two strata seats on either end, that's typically what you have for most hotels. Um, that leads you from stairs all the way down to outside of the building and even from the first floor to outside of the building. The main entrance again is facing the north, um, uh, Route twenty-two. We have a couple of entrances in the back also. Mainly, one of them, if I start from left, um, it's mostly for the mechanical and electrical rooms. We need to have another means of ears for indoor pool, that's one of the exits we have. And then we have two exits, uh, or entrances rather, from the, what we call, uh, hangout or welcome lobby area to the backside where we also have parking so that it's convenient for, uh, patrons to come in, uh, from the backside. When we move to the right, we also have what we call a, a bar, that's a limited bar, uh, right in the middle of the facility. And as you move along to the right, we have a meeting room, uh, and a big function area, basically, you know, the corporate meetings and things along that line. And also, we have a kitchen that is right behind that, that would be serving breakfast and dinner, uh, to the, uh, you know, the people staying there. Uh, right behind the, uh, kitchen, you know, laundry, uh, and, and again, some of the back of the house facilities there. If I go on the second floor and again, typical floors, that pretty much the combination of king and queens, uh, double queen rooms. It would be based on the requirements, uh, of Choice Hotels. So we will detail that out along with handicap rooms and required, you know, required number of handicap rooms. That's pretty much it as far as the floor plans are concerned. It's fairly simple. Uh, may I proceed to that? What do you do? Now I have Z one B, that's also dated zero seven, zero nine, and that is a roof plan. What we wanted to indicate is we have fairly simple roof plan, a flat roof, um, with, uh, a proposed mechanical unit. Um, we also spoke to mechanical engineers to get some guidance from them. Of course, they are not on board yet, they can't really give everything in detail. This is pretty much the location that we worked out so that we can also use the tower that we have. We'll see later on in the elevations, uh, to be used as a screening element or the mechanical unit that will be supplying the, uh, the ventilation to the corridors all along, uh, all the floors, all the upper floors rather. So that's the roof plan, again, it's a flat roof, uh, pretty much the consistent bracket all around, um, roughly about three feet. I'll get to the elevation, I'll explain that. It's the center portion, uh, that juts out, which is actually the key element of the elevation rather of a rather flat building, so to speak. Um, and that's the tower that we call it and it's mostly as a screening element, that's what we see it as. Uh, get to the elevations.
Use the elevation then. That elevation is part of the plan, huh?
That is correct, sir. That's, uh, Z two elevations and also dated seven, uh, revised on seven nine, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the top part, the top drawing is different elevation followed by the rear elevation and two other side elevations. Um, what we have, again, it's, uh, about fourteen foot four inches. Now, when we talk about heights for hotels, uh, primarily we do lot hotels also as for and, uh, many different kind of hotels, uh, different type of structures, whether it's wood construction, concrete constructions and things along that line. This is one thing that we also, uh, talked to the franchise that what should be the heights? Of course, they do have their own height requirements and so we work with that. But, uh, we also work out heights based on supposedly the structure that we would have and then what would be the heights. So in order to do that, uh, what we have right now, it's about fourteen foot four inches from first floor to the second floor and ten foot, ten feet each of the floors, uh, above that. All the way to the roof is forty-four feet, four inches from the finished first floor, not from the grade, the finished first floor. And then, uh, three foot four inches is, uh, three foot bracket is what we have all along, uh, the building, all, all the, all the sides. Uh, we actually used to have it hired and, uh, based on the reports, uh, by the planner, we basically lowered it down to stay in touch with, pretty much with, uh, the regulations that we have. Um, again, one of the main key element we have is the tower, um, that also, that projects about ten feet above the roof level. And it does a couple of things for us. It is the main element that's gonna be seen from Goddard Districts. Also, it breaks the entire monotony of the flat elevation that we have because we don't have like many other hotels have, uh, in and out, uh, areas, uh, in that. So it breaks that elevation into that. Also, height wise, it helps. Again, it's horizontally and vertically, we wanted to break this. This is one of the key element of Cambria as product. Uh, they do, uh, encourage that, they have that for most of their hotels also. And this was one of the key requirement from them. Uh, this tower also is the only place where we have, um, illuminated, internally illuminated sign. That's the only area that we could get a sign. The sign that we have over there is just about sixty-two square feet. And hopefully you can see from your, uh, elevation that you may have, is we don't have a whole lot of space even just to put the sign there. So it's about three feet or so tall sign and we can just fit it in very above, that, above the glass that we have. Um, the lower band, um, it's depicted as a brick in this, um, drawing. But as we started working, we actually figured out we shouldn't be using more of a stone other than brick because again, one thing with brick also, uh, if you go with the regular brick, you need very, really, really thick walls. And what this was doing is it was cutting down on the actual square footage, the usable square footage of the spaces also. So, and these days, of course, almost everybody wants to go with the colored stone which has many different colors and it works well, uh, with the overall theme, um, of most hotels.
Should we, would, would it be better than to show the?
Yeah, I would rather, yeah.
Go ahead and use that and mark that, it'll be exhibit eight eight. Day is today?
Yeah. So in the color rendering, you can see, uh, actually I have small copies, can I just?
Yes, sure.
Other copies.
Now this rendering shows use of the colored stone on the inside, correct?
Right. So, uh, you can see pretty much, um, the earth tones that we wanted to bring to this entire, uh, building and not make it look like a hospital or, uh, prison or any, anything industrial per se. So what we have here is primarily the use of two colors and with one accent color. It, it's slightly orientish, uh, for the L shape that you can see. Uh, that's the feature, uh, the key feature they have. And this is something that they have in many of the hotels. What we have is that L shape, that's again, pretty much the entire building is gonna be ethos, um, the insulated, uh, stucco, uh, per se, you know, for a better term. Um, most, all the windows are gonna be black with, uh, it's aluminum and glass windows, uh, not, non-residential kind of windows. Uh, you would have the entire first floor, uh, throughout all the sites, not just one side only, which, uh, where we could have the culture stone veneer throughout. And, uh, in the front, you could see it's a metal canopy that we have. Uh, unlike most of the hotels, they usually have a very heavy canopy. This is gonna be very light canopy, uh, that also, uh, puts a little bit more emphasis, uh, on the key element of the tower. Not necessarily just make it a huge gigantic, um, uh, portico shade. Now, one of the other thing about the portico shade or the entry, uh, is, uh, it, it's cantilever. Uh, it doesn't have like four columns, traditionally what you would have four columns and a big, big flat roof on top and be done. So it, it's, this, this has, uh, the element, again, this is one of the thing that, uh, Choice, um, they encourage to use this element more or less to convey this and put more emphasis on the building rather than just the canopy. And this also allows a good flow of traffic, um, at the entrance point where we don't have to create a separate driveways where you have four columns and you go underneath one side and you go from the other side. So this certainly helps with that. Um, I guess with that, I think, um.
Again, is there any loudspeaker or other, uh, uh, audio equipment exterior to the building?
No, probably the cars.
Right, it's just, so the lighting of the access doors, how is, are, how are those doors illuminated from the building? Do they have stanzas or?
Uh, the, the access doors, right, front and the sides and all that? Well, they are required to have, the, the exit doors, they're required to have lights.
Mm-hmm.
So the engineers also have figured out, we have a couple of lights, seven lights or something all around the buildings above the, the doors.
They'll be stoned so the light is directed down.
That's it. And then also we have lights in the canopy. So there are about, uh, four or six lights.
And the Cambria sign, is that internally made?
Yes. And that's the only sign.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you. Scarlett, I heard you discussing. Okay, as with the prior architect, um, especially because you have a significant amount of ethos, um, I have recommended that you provide actual materials board for the board to look at. Which is their decision, of course, but, um, I'm gonna be recommending to you because of the ethos. Let's take a look at what, what the quality of that ethos is because you had some real problems in the long paths. Are you willing to do that?
Yes, sure.
The next, uh, thing is that, could you compare architecturally, whether or not between all three buildings, the land, the Goddard and the Cambria, what is the common theme?
I, I mean, I can't think of a common theme per se that they will. Each, each building has its own identity. Again, we try to, as architects, I believe we should try to not only just blend everything, but also stand up at the same time, because everything has its own function inside. So if I have a hotel, and if I try to make it like the school, or if he has a school, then if he tries to make it like a hotel or a hooli hands, it may or may not work very well, and that's.
So, I, I just, I guess one of the things that I wrestle, not wrestle with, but just trying to understand, is the view of these is, is a, we, we should look at it as three, some very separately, including hooli hands as part of the visual for the property. There is no common architectural theme, so really you're breaking it up into three. I mean, is there, is that counselor, maybe you can say, is there going to be any testimony on how this all works, or what would Bridgewater fit?
In terms of the creation and operation of the condominium, I just provide a summary of that.
It's not, it's not really an org, you know, it's not a property organization. It's more of a, a fit with, you know, how are we, the problem? If we're trying to get a vision of how this looks good. I understand good is arbitrary, right? We often have applicants come and say, look, this will look great. Very few people say otherwise. And they then usually provide some testimony as to how it fits. You know, how, how these three very separate architectures, very separate uses, all make sense for this location. Is there any testimony I'd like, because I'm interested in hearing it?
At this point, I have to talk to my client, but I understand your point there. I think it's a very valid point in terms of.
But the answer could still be, we have to read them all separately and just fit.
Let me just talk to the client, but I, right now, what you have seen is the architectural plans as they are presented to this board, and they are extinguishing.
Yes, so what I've, I've heard so far is that they're separate uses, and they fit like jigsaw puzzles, pieces, because they, they physically fit on the property, we should be considering their presence.
I hear your comment.
That's what I've heard.
But I hear your comment.
Is this some exhibit, do we mark?
Yeah.
A eight.
And we already have an A seven, correct?
A seven, yes.
A six would stand out.
The A six and A seven were the Goddard exhibits. A six was the color elevation, A seven were the photos of other Goddard schools.
Thank you. Is there any other member of this board?
Yes, can you go back to the ground floor, please? So, I see a fairly large kitchen, and you mentioned breakfast and dinner, but I don't see necessarily where you want to serve.
Well, it's a good point. Mainly the lobby area, this is where you would have all the furniture, basically for the patrons only, to serve breakfast and dinner.
So they're going to, I, I understand breakfast buffet, as I'm a big fan. But dinner in a lobby, I don't think I've ever seen.
Well, if you, if you actually look at the drawing.
Again, I'll do it again.
So the front entrance to the right of that, we have what we call the hangout area. So that architecturally, the ceiling or the flooring and all that, this is going to be separated. Again, just keep in mind, this is more or less a schematic drawing, where we still have to go a little further with more details how we can separate at the same time keeping open plan, so to speak.
But just for, for, if you could give me a guess, I mean, in that hangout area, how many tables seating four people could you put in that space?
I think from here to here, what we look at it, usually, it's about sixty percent, forty to sixty percent of the total, total capacity should be, should be able to fit in here.
My, my friend here just showed me a picture of a Cambria interior, so let me suggest, when you come back, if you could have something like that for us to see, because this looks very pretty, but I could never envision that from what I'm seeing here.
I envision this.
And if I could take the mayor's comments just one step further, I think, when we just did the chimney rock center, which you probably seen, we had pictures of the entire perimeter, left to right, the whole thing, and supplement was different. And the same, all three, all buildings are the same picture. Would be very helpful for us in seeing how the buildings do or hopefully will work together and not somehow detract from each other. So, if you could, I think it's not a better rendering, not just a testimony. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any other board member have a question for this witness?
I don't know if it would be you or the site plan engineer, how does this impact, how do the lights impact the people behind you?
Right, that's the site plan engineer, he has a lighting diagram, so I'll walk through.
All right, good.
May I deliberately, we did not have any lighting on the building. We left it up to the civil engineer so that it works mainly for the parking and not disturb the neighbors. They are the one who figured out how many, where we should have it, and we worked with Choice Hotels and they were okay with it.
Perfect, thank you.
Any more questions for the board? None. I'll open it up to members of the public at this time. Who have questions for this witness regarding his testimony, please step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Constance Smith, and I live at Three Skim Drive in Bridgewater in the Fender Heights complex. And I do have a question about the lighting, and I don't know if you're the right person to talk to. But it seems like you're going to have a sign, and it's going to be on top of that tower.
That's correct.
So it can be seen?
Yeah, it's facing Route twenty-two.
But.
Route twenty-two.
It will probably be seen from mine, from where I live?
Is, no, that's a good question. So the tower element is solid, correct? It is solid. So, actually, if you are in the back over there.
Correct.
And the sign is in the front on the tower, so tower is just in this area, nothing happening.
I think, I think, I have a green color rendering, and you're mentioning top as if it is a tom.
No, no, it's, it's within the solid face, on the surface of the tower.
Are you not going to see it from behind?
No, no, it's not, thank you.
My next question, about garbage. About how many dumpsters do you think you're going to have? Where are they going to be located, and what kind of garbage are you going to have? You're going to have like organic garbage, it sounds like you're having a kitchen and you're serving meals? And you're going to have one hundred and seventy rooms?
Hundred and twenty-one.
Hundred and twenty-one.
And then, pardon me?
Hundred and twenty-one, yeah.
Hundred, okay, sorry, hundred and twenty-one. So that's a lot of rooms that you're getting garbage out of, besides any other extraneous garbage. So how many dumpsters are we going to have? How close are you going to be to the back, to Fender? And what, what are you going to do to protect it from attracting animals like rats, mice, raccoons?
That's actually, the site engineer lays all that out, and that's on the site plan. So Mr. Michelle will be back on August thirteenth, will have the whole schematic on the action closed, isn't it?
And just for, for him also, how often, and at what time are we going to be collecting?
Right, we, we'll get that out of the car.
Quality of life, where we're going to smell organic garbage, especially in the summer? And how clearly they're going to come and get the dumpsters?
Yes.
Things like that. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member has a question? Please step forward. Please state your name again.
Robert Smith, I'm over from Sanford Drive, in Common Meaning Complex. There's a few questions I would like to ask. Since you have the units, the whole hotel in the back, how do you intend to access it, how do you intend to link it?
To the rear. You're asking about the rear access door, right?
Right, and back. No, I'm talking about cars.
Cars?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be on the site?
Yeah, there is parking on the perimeter of the building, yeah.
Yes, but I'm asking you, how are you going to come off the driveways, into the driveways of the twenty-two?
Right, that's.
Angle of that route?
That's all on the site.
Right, I'd like to know, why are you coming across the front end of hooli hands?
Yeah, all of that, that's all on the site.
Now, that area out there in front, it's all like hooli hands.
No.
Yeah, they're just like, where it is?
It's so, I don't want to get technical, but actually, all of the parcels are owned in common, so that you can, you can unify the property.
Do you need marines for that?
No, because there's no block lines. It's a single parcel.
What I'm saying is what I learned today, being this gate from the engineers, from the state, you cannot share a driveway commonly, because if one person is out of business, you got landlocked, you can't get in.
No, that's not, that's not the case here. This is, this is a single parcel, so, and Mr. Dean will talk about this. We get a permit from the Department of Transportation that is for the entirety of the parcel. So that governs the access and the rights in and out of Route twenty-two through a single parcel. So the three uses are all governed by that one permit.
And the other question I have, you're going to have a bar in the hotel? Is, with entertainment?
No, no, this is for the patrons, like, you know, if you go to any other hotel and just in the evening you would have a bar, that's about it, so it'd be closed the rest of the time.
I've been to a thousand hotels, I used to drive a tour bus. Some bars are outside with music, some bars aren't.
No, no, this doesn't have any of those things. When you say entertainment, you mean like live entertainment, band, things along that line?
That's what I'm talking about.
No, this is a small hotel, it, it's not a resort, per se, so in this kind of, basically, it's catering to more or less a business community. So if I'm there and I have a testimony today, like when my friend came here all the way from Tennessee, and so he wants to just relax, use the bar, go back to his room, that's about it.
Well, I did a lot of trips, believe me, doesn't always work that way. And believe me, I used to have fifty-six people on the bus. And I, I tried.
We hope to have fifty-six people here also, with you.
You know, may, maybe we will. So, that's only, I thank you, you cleared up a couple of questions. And the other thing, she covered the garbage. The trucks die here for hooli hands, gets me up four o'clock every morning, four o'clock, right on the dot. Late, late as it's been, it's four thirty in the morning when you're young. That's, that's the problem, is annoying as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public with a question for this witness regarding his testimony? Please state your name again.
Bill Reilly from, from Nice. Okay, could you please put up a diary of A eight? All right.
Thank you. Document this.
Now, the total height of that building, from ground to roof, including the parapet tower, is how high?
It's fifty-four feet eleven to the top of the tower.
Right?
Yes, and to the parapet, the legal parapet, what we have is forty-seven feet four inches, just three feet above the roof, actual roof.
So total height is just over fifty feet, then, is that correct?
Just for the small portion of the tower, yes, that's correct.
Yes, that, that tower over, that will rise above the diestries between, between that and, you know, Fender Heights buildings along Sanford Drive. Okay, how far back?
Let's, let's see if the witness agrees with your statement, that's, you have to try to make it equitable.
I'm sorry, sir, I haven't. The tower element, that's just for the front and the screen and the canopy, but, correct?
Right.
So it doesn't cover the entire length of the building?
No, no.
So it's only in a small area that is more focused towards Route twenty-two, right?
Well, then how high is the, is the rest of the building, that's?
Forty-seven feet four inches, and that was, I mentioned.
Forty-seven feet four inches, okay. So it would sound just about plus the three tops, I mean, of the highest trees.
But again, sir, I mean, you're going to have to take a look at it. This is, when you, when you think about.
I see it right there.
No, what I'm saying is, when you think about heights and, right? If you look at perspective, if you look at things from a distance, whether it's the front, the side, or whatever it is, I think that's how you may want to see too. And it's not just the number, the forty-seven feet four, and I have a tree in my yard, it's fifty feet, and it's going to go beyond, beyond that. I don't know whether that terminal will be a little more.
Well, as an aside here briefly, any Fender heights of residents, I, I have talked to, do not want this, this hotel or this one. So this, just as a, for, for.
You can testify, Mr. Reilly, no, I can believe, as do other persons, they'll need to come and be put under oath to make their statement.
I might get a sub petition if need be, if, if that's my thing, because, because it doesn't really have time to come here. And I'm retired, and I can think of, although I can think of other ways to spend my evenings, but I'm trying to do this to avoid that, but it, it might be inevitable in any way.
Would you want to have to go outside and ask you?
Okay.
Mr. Reilly, so you don't waste your time on petitions. Petitions can, are not admissible to a planning board or a zoning board in New Jersey, because they are not, because the person who signs them is not available at the hearing to make the statement and be cross-examined by anyone else. So, when you, when you do testify on the explanation of your position about the application, not right now, or when someone else does, that has to be live testimony in the hearing.
Yeah, I'll.
I don't think you should think it's funny, I mean, it's just, that's just the rules of.
Well, it's sad, really, it's, it's not funny.
It isn't actually sad, it's actually, it's actually statutorily required in order to protect the interests of every person who might have an interest in the matter, not just the applicant, everyone, okay? So, rest assured that that's, that is just, let's call it, universal throughout the state of New Jersey.
Yes, everyone's equal in the, in the, some worth, some worth the numbers. But anyway, how far back from the, from the eight-foot fence will the, will this hotel be about?
Again, Mr. Michelle has gone through that, he'll describe that with the, with the case, that's on the site plan.
In the location, in relation to the current existing hooli hands restaurant, where would that fit?
It's on the site plan.
That's on the site plan, right, which will be covered by the engineer, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that has a question for this witness regarding his testimony? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we'll take a five-minute break for Mr. Dean, Mr. Dean, last witness this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Five-minute bathroom break.
Yeah.